Hi, you are viewing Disciples of the Word Catholic Apostolate YouTube channel. Welcome to the Bible Timeline Study Course. Let us all be still and start with a short prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Let us pray. I will sing to the Lord, for he is gloriously triumphant; horse and chariot he has cast into the sea. My strength and my courage is the Lord, and he has been my Savior. He is my God; I praise him. The God of my father, I extol him. The Lord is a warrior; Lord is his name. Your hand, O Lord, magnificent in power; your right hand, O Lord, has shattered the enemy. In your great majesty, you overthrew your adversaries; you used ill wrath to consume them like stab. Who is like you among the gods, O Lord? Who is like you, magnificent in holiness, oh terrible and renowned worker of wonders? In your mercy, you led the people you redeemed; in your strength, you guided them to your holy dwelling. And you brought them and planted them on the mountain of your inheritance, the place where you made your seat, O Lord, the sanctuary, O Lord, which your hands established. The glory shall ring forever and ever. Let us pray to the Holy Spirit for guidance. Breathe in me, O Holy Spirit, that my thoughts may all be holy. Act in me, O Holy Spirit, that my work too may be holy. Grow my heart, O Holy Spirit, that I love but what is holy. Strengthen me, O Holy Spirit, to defend all that is holy. Guard me then, O Holy Spirit, that I always may be holy. Amen. Let us now proceed with our session for the day. In this letter to Timothy, Saint Paul says, “All Scripture is God-breathed and is useful for teaching, rebuking, correcting, and training in righteousness, so that the man of God may be thoroughly equipped for every good deed.” For our constant reminders, always read the text in context. When you read, study, pray Scriptures, bring everything you have: intelligence, memory, imagination, senses, experiences, training, and a new pair of eyes and ears. Our session for today is Session 4 of the Bible Timeline Study: Egypt and the Exodus. Egypt and the Exodus is the Third Bible Timeline period which covers the book of Exodus. This is the chart of the Third Bible period. The narrative book is the Exodus. The supplemental book is the Vedicus. Here, God will establish his one holy nation through his chosen people, the Israelites. The description of the part of salvation history and the bloodline of Jesus Christ are also seen in this chart. The Exodus is the second book of the Pentateuch. The word Pentateuch comes from the combination of the Greek words penta (meaning five) and theochos (meaning scrolls). It therefore simply refers to the first five scrolls or books of the Bible, which also makes up the first part of the Jewish Canon or the Torah, meaning the law. The word Exodus comes from the Greek word for departure or exit. The Hebrew title of this book is Wele Shimoth, meaning... And these are the names, which are the first words also of this book. There were many editions of the book, but the final reduction was in the 5th century B.C. The Exodus is essential to the understanding of the history and religion of the Hebrews because it is the story of the birth of Israel as a nation. The Exodus is a religious epic which contains historical facts that forms the groundwork of the Israelite religion in an epic tone. And epic is a narrative accounting of the past aimed to arouse enthusiasm and to celebrate heroes. As such, Exodus was used to exalt the greatness of the God of Israel and to reassure the chosen people of God. Documentary theory says that the Pentateuch is made of interwoven materials from: 1. The historical saga of the northern kingdom from the Elohimist source; 2. The historical saga of the southern kingdom from the Yahwehist source; 3. Legal documents preserving the laws of the kingdom from the Jeteronomist source; and 4. The code and ritual of the southern kingdom from the Priestly source. The author may be represented as the actual writer or the person who inspired the tradition since the Pentateuch was originally handed down orally, then organized in cycles, and eventually written down and reworked over a span of 700 years. Majority of the content of the Exodus are derived from: 1. The Yahwehist tradition, where God is referred to as Yahweh; 2. The Elohimist tradition, where God is referred to as Elohim; and 3. The Priestly tradition, which mostly refers to the practices of the priests of Israel. A minor portion comes from the Jeteronomic tradition. According to 1 Kings, the Exodus happened 480 years before Solomon’s temple, which is constructed in 970 B.C. Therefore, it happened in 1450 B.C., or that the Israelites stayed in Egypt for 200 years. However, many scholars say that it happened in the 13th century or 300 years after Joseph’s death, and therefore, the Israelites were in Egypt for 370 years. Still, in Genesis, it is said that God told Abraham that the Israelites will be in Egypt for 400 years, and in Exodus, that the Israelites were in Egypt for 430 years. How are we to understand this? We always say that it is not the how, but the why. This just shows us the different sources of what is written in the books of the Bible. We will see that three of the four versions more or less agree with each other. I therefore tend to side with Genesis, where God himself says 400 years and which conforms to the actual count of the writer in Exodus, which says 430 years. However, let me remind you that it is not the what and the how that we must place our attention on, but the what and the why in order to understand the message of the Bible. Accurate dates may be difficult to determine because of the different writers and the length of time that has elapsed. Here is the time chart where we may see the four versions, where the Israelites arrive in Egypt at around 1650 B.C., during the time of the rule of Hixas in Egypt. We also see the change of rulers in the 8th dynasty of Amos I and the most likely time of the Exodus during the rule of Ramses II. Moses was 40 years old when he struck the blow for the Israelites’ leave, which ended up in disaster for him. He therefore fled to Midian, where he met his wife Sepora, a daughter of Jethro, also called Dreul, who was the priest of Midian. Midianites are the descendants of Abraham and his second wife, Ketura. Moses is known as the great lawgiver because of the Ten Commandments. He is also the founder of the Israel nation, the founder of oral tradition because he was an original source of the Torah, the mediator of the covenant between God and the Israelites, and the founder of Yahweh, or the worship of Yahweh, the one God of Israel. Let us complete these verses. “God said, ‘Come, no mirror; remove the sandals from your feet; for the place where you stand is blank.’ ‘I am the God of your father,’ he continued, ‘the God of Abraham, the God of Isaac, and the God of Jacob.’ Moses hid his face, for he was afraid to look at blank.” And the answers are: holy ground and God. What is a theophany? Before answering that question, let us first define the word epiphany. An epiphany is an experience of a sudden and striking realization. Generally, the term is used to describe a scientific breakthrough or a religious or philosophical discovery, but it can also apply to a sudden realization of any situation. The word theophany comes from the Greek word theoponia, meaning “an appearance of God.” Theophany is the visible manifestation or appearance of God to a human. Now, divine revelations without the appearance of God are usually often called epiphanies, but really they are hierophanes. They are called hierophanes rather than theophanes. This word comes from the combination of two Greek words: hieros, meaning sacred or holy, and phanein, meaning to reveal or to bring to light. The burning bush and the pillars of smoke and fire are theophanes. Let us complete these verses. “He answered, ‘I will be with you, and this shall be your proof, that it is I who have sent you; when you bring my people out of Egypt, you will worship God on this very mountain.’ But said Moses to God, ‘When I go to the Israelites and say to them, ‘The God of your fathers has sent me to you; if they ask me, what is his name? What am I to tell them?’ God replied, ‘Blank.’” The answer is: I am who am. The name of God is a tetragrammaton composed of the four Hebrew letters Yod, Hev, Av, Heh. And the Hebrew writing has no vowels, and therefore, each symbol may have different meanings. The boxed meanings are the most likely meanings of the tetragrammaton. Tetragrammaton comes from the Greek word meaning consisting of four letters. In Latin script, it is written as YHWH, therefore the name Yahweh, I am who am, which is the name of the God of Israel. Jewish traditions do not pronounce the word nor do they read aloud the name Yahweh. Instead, the word is substituted with a different term. The substitute terms are hakadosh baruch, who, meaning the holy name; agonai, meaning lord, or hashem, meaning the name. In written form, we see the word Lord all in capital letters in Scripture because they substitute for the name of God. Let us complete these verses. “The Israelites set out from Ramses for Sukoth about blank on foot, not counting the children, since the dog they brought out of Egypt was not leavened; they baked into blank. They had been rushed out of Egypt and had no opportunity even to prepare food for the journey.” The answers are: 600,000 men and 11 goats. The 10 plagues sent by God to Egypt occurred over a period of six months to a year, and these plagues did not happen by chance. The absolute control of God was demonstrated during these plagues. He distinguished between his people and the Egyptians. He controlled the extent and the areas affected by each plague, and finally, he announced the timing of each plague, and he can actually call a who at any time in answer to a prayer. The plagues demonstrate Yahweh’s superiority over the Egyptian gods represented by each plague. We now go to the origin of the Feast of the Passover, also called the Feast of the Eleven Bread. The Passover, or Pesat in Hebrew, is a Jewish festival which celebrates the Israelites’ exodus from Egypt and their freedom from slavery. The Feast of the Passover, also the Feast of the Eleven Bread, was the first of the festivals to be commanded by God for Israel to celebrate. The Feast of the Eleven Bread comes from the bread which they ate and took with them as they left Egypt in a hurry without waiting for the breads to rise. The evening before they left, Israel celebrated the first Passover with the Paschal Lamb and the Eleven Bread. Passover will forever be associated with deliverance and will even prefigure the salvation won by Christ for mankind. Let us now compare the Passover with the crucifixion of Christ. John the Baptist refers to Jesus as the Lamb of God who takes away the sins of the world. Paul refers to Christ as our Passover Lamb. And Peter refers to Christ as a lamb without blemish or defect. Jesus is our Passover. He was killed at Passover time, and the Last Supper was a Passover meal for all Christians. By spiritually applying the sinless blood of Christ to our lives by faith, we trust Christ to save us from death caused by sin. The Israelites, who in faith too apply the blood of the Paschal Lamb to their homes, becomes a model for us. It was not the Israelites’ ancestry, nor good standing, or their nature that saved them; it was only the blood of the Lamb that paid them accent from death. We too were saved by the blood of Christ when we were all sinners still. The most important qualification of the Lamb is to be without blemish. To be without blemish is to do without sin. Jesus is truly the one without the blemish of sin. The second point is that this Lamb must be a firstborn Lamb, and Jesus is indeed the firstborn of God. Furthermore, the Lamb has to be kept until the fourth day of the same month and killed in the evening. When Christ was crucified, it was said in Matthew, chapter 27, that “From the sixth hour darkness fell over all the land until the ninth hour.” The phrase “in the evening” is a Jewish expression. The famous Jewish historian Josephus said that the word evening means the sixth hour to the ninth hour, which on our clock today would be from noon to 3 P.M. Exodus further says about the Paschal Lamb, “You shall not break any of these boats.” This was also fulfilled in Jesus. John, chapter 19, verse 36 says, “For these things happened, that the Scripture might be fulfilled.” Let us complete these verses. “Then Moses stretched out his hand over the sea, and the Lord swept the sea with a strong east wind throughout the night, and so turned it into blank. When the water was thus divided, the Israelites marched into the mids of the sea on blank, with the water like a wall to their right and to their left.” And the answer to both blanks is: dry land. This is the map of the traditional or old route of the Exodus, where it is said that Mount Sinai was located in the Sinai Peninsula. This is the map of Exodus, which shows another route that goes to the eastern side of the Sinai Peninsula at Nuwaiba Beach, passing through Awadi or a passage between two mountain cliffs. The Israelites traveled from Goshen in Egypt towards Sukoth, through the Wadi, across the wilderness of the Red Sea, and to Nuwaiba Beach. From there, they crossed the Gulf of Akaba of the Red Sea towards Midian in Arabia, where Mount Horab or Mount Sinai, and now known as Javelal-Lois, near the home of Jethro, is located. This is a satellite picture of the Wadi towards Nuwaiba Beach. The Wadi was between two mountain walls, thereby making it impossible for the chariots to pass along the pillar of fire and smoke. So, my reading showed an underwater land bridge between Nuwaiba Beach and the Saudi Shore Cross. According to these archaeologists, the Israelites crossed the Red Sea from Nuwaiba Beach to the Arabian side and went towards Javelal-Lois, which was said to be the real Mount Sinai, near the home of Jethro, where Moses received the Ten Commandments. Mount Horab and Mount Sinai are run at the same. It is where the call of Moses by God first happened and where God handed down to Moses the Ten Commandments and where God told Moses during their first meeting that, “When you bring my people out of Egypt, you will worship God on this very mount.” This map shows the route taken by Moses in his escape to Midian, where he killed Egyptians, thereby temporarily settling in the home of Jethro, his father-in-law. The other affirmation of the location of Mount Sinai in Arabia may be read in Paul’s letter to the Galatians, chapter 4, verse 25. Here is a rock on the Arabian side showing some Israelite carving, such as that of the menorah candlestick. This is said to be a marker on the crossing of the Arabian side. Let us complete these verses. “Tell the Israelites, you have seen for yourselves how I treated the Egyptians, and how I bore you up on eagle wings and brought you here to myself. Therefore, if you hearken to my blank and keep my blank, you shall be my special possession; dearer to me than all other people, the old earth is mine.” And the answers are: voice and covenant. In creation, God spoke the words of life. Here, in the Exodus, with the Ten Commandments, God speaks the words for living. The summary and climax of God’s covenant agreement with his people is set out in a basic ethical norm that is applicable to people of all ages and in all ages. The first part of the commandments concern relationship with God, while the second part, the remaining commandments, concern the relationship with one another. The decalogue of the Ten Commandments show God’s concern for the whole of life. God sets the standards for family life, regard for human life, sex, property, speech, and thought. Jesus further summarizes the commandments into two: loving God and loving our neighbor. What are the truths and messages of the Ten Commandments? These are: 1. The need for unswerving fidelity to God; 2. The importance of the Sabbath; 3. The respect for life; 4. The commitment against injustice; 5. The love of neighbor; and finally, universal forgiveness. The commandments further show us that reverence for God has moral implications. The handing down of the Ten Commandments to Israel has developed three blocks of legal codices, which are consolidated over 800 years. 1. The Cynatic Code, which reflected an agricultural and rural society, which was during the period of judges. 2. The Jeteronomic Code, which reflected traditions of a highly urban and economically well-off society during the period of the prophets. And 3. The Priestly Code of Holiness, reflecting a society in crisis during the time of exile. The tabernacle was made according to the specifications dictated by God to Moses, and the Ark of the Covenant was kept in Holy of Holies of the tabernacle. The tabernacle was where the Lord, in his glory, had actually come to dwell amongst his people. He was pitching his tent in the mids of their tents. The tabernacle represents the completion and climax of God’s redemption of his people. The tabernacle sums up the basic truth about their religion, that it must conform to the will and nature of God, and failure to match the will of God will render it. and failure to match the will of God will render it ultimately futile. The Ark of the Covenant was the very center of this relationship between God and his people. It was located in the Holy of Holies, and entering the court of the tabernacle was entering the presence of God himself. Inside the ark are the tablets of the law engraved anew in representation of God's renewal of the covenant. The Ark of the Covenant is said to contain the gold jar containing manna, the staff of Aaron that had sprouted, and the tablets of the covenant. However, in First Kings chapter eight, it is said that when Solomon brought the ark into a newly-built temple, it only contained the stone tablets, and the rub of Aaron and the jar of manna was not mentioned. It seems that it must have been removed at some point before the ark was brought into a temple built by Solomon. These are the discoveries in the book of Exodus. One, that God manifests himself as the Lord of history and the Lord of nature. Two, that the Lord God, Yahweh, is the triumphant and exalted hero of this religious epic. Three, that God is always faithful to his promises. Four, that God cares for the oppressed and sets them free. Five, that God chooses people to be his instruments. Six, that when God calls, he also empowers those whom he calls in order for them to succeed in the mission received from him. Eight, that God gives divine assurance to the success of his human instrument. Nine, that the mission God gave Moses was the liberation and reorganization of God's people. And ten, that the dominant trait of Moses was perseverance or being steadfast in purpose despite all oppositions. Let us group ourselves into small groups so that each may give their comments, ideas, sentiments, understandings, and readings from the Spirit. These questions will serve as discussion starters for us to talk about the matters that we have learned or discovered from this session. First question is, did you ever feel that you have been forgotten by God? Why or why not? The second question, did you ever feel that you are being called by God to do something? And did God equip you for this? And finally, the third question, what was your most significant discovery in this session? Our next session will be about desert wanderings. Please read the Book of Numbers before our session. Bring your personal Bibles and journals. In the meantime, this is Brother Dick inviting you to join me in our closing prayer. Father, thank you for reminding us that we, your children, are important to you, that you will always look after our good, and you will not tire of bringing us towards the right path, the path that leads to our final home with you in heaven. During the times that we falter and stumble, we ask that you show us your mercy and forgive us our transgressions. Lord, we will try to do your will and to follow your commandments. Brothers and sisters, let us ponder this next song in our hearts and make it a part of our closing prayer.
Hindi kita malilimutan Hindi kita papabayaan Nakaukit magpakaylan man Sa'king palat ang iyong pangalan Malilimutan ba nang ina Ang anak nagaling sa kanya Sanggol sa kanyang sinapupunan Pa'no niya matatalikdan Ngunit kahit na malimutan Nang ina ang anak yang tangan Hindi kita malilimutan Kailan mai di papabayaan Hindi kita malilimutan Kailan mai di papabayaan Sanggol sa kanyang sinapupunan Hindi kita malilimutan Kailan mai di papabayaan Hindi kita malilimutan
Glory to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and will be forever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.